Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2023, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I'm Acting Chair Cynthia Harris, and I would like to thank you for joining us this evening, whether you are here in council chambers, at the Menlo Park Bellhaven Branch Library, or at home on Zoom. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I'm going to take the role. So Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Schindler.
Present.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
It looks like Commissioner Barms is absent tonight. I am here, so we have five commissioners, and we have a quorum and can get started. Let's move on to C, Reports and Announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there any reports or announcements that you'd like to make at this time?
Good evening, Chair Harris and Commissioners. I don't have any reports or announcements, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Does anyone from the Commission have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Riggs.
Ms. Harris, just for an update on the reformatting of the staff reports, can you just give us an idea? Is that something you're working on?
So the staff reports have been re-formatted to match the City Council format. So I understand there were some concerns about that, but I think the direction is to use the same format for Planning Commission and City Council.
All right. Thank you for that advice.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Next, we're going to go to Item D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject that is not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the Commission once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment, other than to provide general information. If you were here for one of the items that is actually on the agenda, don't worry, you will have a chance to comment later on that particular agenda item. Now is just for Public Comment that is not, for items that are not on the agenda. Ms. Begon, would you like to explain to the public how they may make comments, since we have three different locations?
Sure, yeah. So each speaker may address the Planning Commission once for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of the comment, and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill a comment card and bring it to me.
Okay, do we have any public comment at this time?
We currently do not have any comments or questions, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Okay, let's give it a minute, and that includes both Zoom and the Bellhaven Library and here in chambers.
Correct.
Okay, it seems that we don't have anyone at this time. Let's move on to the Consent Calendar. We have two items on the Consent Calendar, E1, which is the minutes from December 5, 2022, Planning Commission Meeting, and E2, Architectural Control for 120 Constitution Drive. Because we actually have a project on the Consent Calendar, I would actually like to take Public Comment for the Consent Calendar. So the public is free to comment on either of the items in the Consent Calendar at this time, including the 120 Constitution Drive. So again, I would like to reach out for Public Comment on this item. Ms. Begon, let's give it a minute. Okay, it seems that we don't have any comments, so I will close Public Comment.
I'm sorry. This one is for pool heating. I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure out which.
This is for the E, the Consent Calendar, including 120 Constitution.
Okay, yeah, I don't see any comments for that.
Okay. So again, we'll close Public Comment. And the first item, I would like to pull the minutes from the Consent Calendar and vote on them separately, as I was not present at the December 5 meeting. So if I could ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the December 5 Planning Commission Meeting, if anyone?
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second from Ms. Schindler. Let's take a vote. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate. Okay, and I am abstaining as well. So we have three votes for, two abstentions, and one absent, which I guess constitutes a majority of who's here. So next, we're going to move on to E2, which is Architectural Control for 120 Constitution Drive. Does anyone want to pull that item from the Consent Calendar? Commissioner Tate.
So I have a question about this through the Chair of Staff. Why is this item, since it is a project on the Consent Calendar?
Yeah, we put the smaller architectural controls on the Consent Calendar, since there may not be a lot of discussion on those. But if, certainly if Commissioners have questions or comments, it can be pulled from Consent, and we can discuss it as any other project.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the Architectural Control, I guess to approve the second item on the Consent Calendar? Commissioner Schindler?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
And I also am a yes. So this, the Consent Calendar Item 2 passes with four, five yeses and one absence. Okay, next, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of this meeting, which is Item F. And the first, we have three public hearing items on tonight's agenda, however, the third item has been continued. So let's begin with F1. This is for a denial of a use permit at 100 Terminal Avenue for the Menlo Park Community Campus. So let me read that description. "It is to consider and adopt a resolution to deny a use permit to exceed the maximum nighttime noise limit of 50 decibels measured at residential property lines to accommodate electric pool heating equipment for the Menlo Park Community Campus located at 100 Terminal Avenue. This was continued from the meeting on the 27th of February." Are there any presentations from staff or the applicant on this item?
Good evening, Chair Harris. We don't have a presentation. I do have a quick update. We did receive a few emails after publication of the staff report. There are hard copies in the back. They didn't quite make it on the online agenda, but generally, they were in support of denying the use permit and appreciative of the Planning Commission's review and discussion on this item. And then, an additional comment about reducing noise levels being included in the staff report, as it was mentioned in the discussion last time. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Okay, we'll take clarifying questions at this time, and then we'll move to open up Public Comment. I have a clarifying question. I actually had the same question that came up today in the email, which is when I went back to review the video of this meeting on the 27th of February, it was, my understanding was that the motion included a few things. One was a request to do further noticing, which was going to be required, since the continuation was to a date not certain, a request for additional canvassing, and as well as urging staff and the applicant to target something less than the 50 decibels versus the meeting, the city's requirement. And I understand that these last two items are not in the purview necessarily of the Planning Commission, but given that there was a request as part of the motion, I'm just wondering why that was not part of the, and was not in the staff report this time?
Right. So to trust the noise level first, you are correct. That's not necessarily something that's within the purview of the Planning Commission. We can certainly update the resolution to indicate the desire, but it's not something we can really condition on an approval and not on a denial of the use permit. We do have members of the Engineering Division to see if they have looked into anything in terms of reducing the noise levels. It has only been a month, and so we are working on it. I know they're working on it, but they may be able to address that a little bit more. And then, we also did standard noticing, and then our Library and Community Services did hand-deliver additional letters noticing of the Planning Commission meeting tonight, and our Library and Community Services Director is on the line as well. He might be able to answer the extent to which that was handed out, but I believe it was the same radius as the previous meeting.
So if it is possible to amend the staff report, how does that work? Do I, am I just asking you to do it based on the review of the video, or is this something that we would need to take a vote on?
So in making the motion to deny the project, you can request that the resolution be amended, and we can certainly update the resolution when we get it finalized to reflect the request.
I think that's great, and I was thinking that we wanted, that I would like to see the staff report from today amended in order to illustrate those items that were in the original motion.
Yeah, as far as the staff report, I'm not sure how that would go, since it's published prior to the meeting to inform the Commission and the public about the item that will be heard. If the request is another continuation to update the staff report in the resolution, we could do that. Certainly, the discussion tonight will be reflected in the minutes. And the motion could, if the motion is to deny the project per the resolution that staff drafted, the motion could certainly include additional information that we can add as additional whereas statements in the resolution.
So for, it seems that that is what was done at the February 27 meeting, so I'm wondering why it would be different this time if we did the same thing, if we added a whereas statement to tonight's motion?
Well, so I guess we apologize to staff if we didn't capture the motion correctly, which it sounds like is the case. So the options would be to continue the meeting with this direction to staff to bring back a revised resolution at two weeks or at another time, or for us to update the resolution after the meeting per the motion, per a motion and vote tonight.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I think what we should do is go ahead with Public Comment or any other Commissioner questions, and then we can make this as part of our discussion after, if we want to make any changes. Does anybody else have any clarifying questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Tate.
Yes, I don't have a question, but I think that when it's published, it should be published accurately, because this way, it doesn't seem that it's noticed properly. So that's my opinion here. So I would go for us putting this into another meeting.
You're saying continue this particular meeting?
I am, because it was not, it wasn't accurate with what the motion was. So the public doesn't get the full, as to why we continued it.
Okay. Is there an attorney present that would like to help us out with this?
Through the chair, I don't believe we have anyone from the City Attorney's Office here tonight.
Okay, so Commissioner Tate, my concern is that we have a lot of people in the audience that have come tonight, and I would like them to be able to make public comments. So that's, I guess, why I was kind of asking for a city attorney to determine what should we do, if one of the Commissioners wants to continue the item. How, I guess I'll look to staff, then if there's no city attorney, how do we proceed?
Yeah, through the chair. So there was public comment last time, and it's certainly up to the chair whether to open it again tonight. As far as the continuation, that would be like any other motion, where a Commissioner makes a first, a second, and then there's a vote. But if public comment will be opened, that should happen before any motion, if that's, yeah, that would happen before any motion, if that helps.
Okay.
Given the turnout, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. So with that, if there are no other questions of staff at this point, I will go ahead, I'd like to open up public, the public on this item, and you will, I haven't seen how many people are interested in speaking. Do you have a number two in the chambers, and do we have any on Zoom? Okay, all right. So each of you will have three minutes to speak, and if there are others that would like to make a public comment, please turn in a card if you're in the chambers, or in the Bellhaven Library, or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Okay, thanks. Please go ahead.
Okay, I will now introduce Ruby. Ruby, you can come up, and you have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
I'm sorry, point of order through the chair. I'm finding it quite difficult to understand Ms. Begon.
I'm sorry, introducing Ruby for the first public comment.
Okay, thank you. It's much better when you speak into the microphone. Thank you.
I believe that staff should find an electrical heater that is not noisy. If not, therefore, I do not want an electrical heater unless it is not noisy. And as you can see, I'm a child. I have my whole life ahead of me, and I don't want to spend what could be the rest of my life in a house that has noise issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now I will introduce Eduardo. Eduardo, you can come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
Hi, I want to thank the Commission for supporting us for declining this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others?
And I do not see any more public comments, either in person or online.
Okay, and what about at the Bellhaven Library viewing site? I see.
Oh, we have a few individuals in attendance, but none have raised their hand to comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, in that case, I'm gonna...
I'm sorry, I take that back. As I said that, we do have someone who would like to comment right over there. We do have one commenter.
Terrific, thank you.
Hello, my Commission, thank you for your time today. I really appreciated the questions that were being asked just a moment ago, in particular, with making sure that there's need to continuation of canvassing notices to, in bilingual languages to the host, considering effective by this. And also, I appreciate that if, I don't know the terminology, but when a decision is being made about the noise of not just meeting the minimum 15-point decimal, or however that is placed, but making sure that it's a good amount below that as to not distract the neighborhood. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, is there anyone else?
Thank you, Chair Harris. At this moment, I do not see any more comments or questions, either in person or online.
Okay, terrific. Thank you all for making comments, especially young people who are coming on a school night. Appreciate that. Now, I'd like to bring it back to the Commission for just general comments and discussion. Who would like to, we also have the discussion, I'd like to make sure that we touch on Commissioner Tate's thoughts. So if whoever would like to speak, please let me know. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may direct a question to staff, given that we've had four weeks since our previous meeting, is it possible, Mr. Smith, you could confirm any progress made by the architect and engineers?
I may defer to Teresa Vedian in our Engineering Division to answer that question.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I am Teresa Vedian, Senior Civil Engineer. So we are continuing to look at various options to reduce the noise levels. We have a number of options on the table. One of the most immediate actions that we're taking is to look at our modeling and make sure that our modeling, that's taking all the data, the input, and which determines the amount of runtime and the hours of operation for the heat pumps. We're looking to make that as accurate as we can. So that's something that we're actively working on. We hope to have an update by the end of next week. And then we also have a number of other options that we are looking at. Of course, those all have cost and schedule impacts, so we'll need further direction on those. But yes, we are definitely still looking at a number of options.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Harris. So I'd like to thank, again, community members for showing up and making comment, and to staff and the design team. In the staff report, I think the conclusion says, should I have it here, that the team will continue to evaluate alternatives that will allow the project to operate without the use of natural gas, while also meeting the noise requirements. And so, again, like last time, we said residents shouldn't have, should not have to choose between clean air and quiet. Let's make both happen. And I just want to make sure that I've understood the community's desire, and also, I believe fellow Commissioners might have made this comment, that in exploring these options, they don't compromise the operating schedule and the temperatures of the pool as compared to the Burgess pools. Just wouldn't want, we wouldn't want community members in Bellhaven not having the same pool access as we do, as those who are closer to Burgess. And just want to maybe through the chair, ask of staff if that was, I did not see that point in the staff report, so I just wanted to check on that issue.
Yes, absolutely. We are aware of the desire to keep the pools at the same temperature and hours of operation, so we're working under those assumptions, that those will remain the same.
Thank you.
I had a question of staff or the applicant. We got an email from Angela Evans, who provided a couple different ideas, and I'm wondering if you have looked at those ideas and could make any comments, if those are some things that you could take a look at. I think there were sort of three bullet points in her email, and if, I assume you probably read it, but if you didn't, I'm happy to outline those for you.
They may not have sent that to staff. I don't have an email from Angela Evans. There is one from Karen Grove that had a few options. Was it that one?
No, but you know, perhaps I will forward this if it didn't come to you all. I thought it did, because it came to all of us. Okay. I will, I guess I'll just, in that case, forward it and hope that this is something you guys can respond to in time. Who else might have a comment? And let's, we still have this issue of continuance, even though now we've started discussing it, so I'm not sure where we are on that. Commissioner Tate.
I'd still like it to be continued, so that it's accurate. And it actually sounds like it's not a bad idea to continue anyway, because we're waiting on additional information. And now, there's a second item that didn't make it in, that Commissioner Doe mentioned just a second ago.
Okay, okay. Would you like to make a motion to that effect, Commissioner Tate?
Through the chair, if I may, this is Sean Reinhardt, the Library and Community Services Director over at the Bellhaven Library.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I did receive the email from Ms. Evans. I believe she sent it to the City Council list, which I do receive those. So I didn't see the one reference from Karen Grove, but it sounds like... but it sounds like those emails were similar in that they offered kind of specific ideas about different equipment or some other sort of technical considerations. I would just acknowledge to the Commission that I believe, and maybe the planning staff be correct if I'm wrong, the item before you is really whether or not to approve a use permit to allow the project to exceed the overnight noise limit. It sounds like, and I don't want to presume that, you know, based on the discussion on February 27th, the planning commission was inclined to deny that use permit. Any solutions that involve reducing the noise to the extent that a permit is not required, then kind of would no longer be an issue for the planning commission. So I just want to point out that the project is kind of proceeding at pace. It's on a schedule. If there is any possibility or pathway for the commission to consider just taking action on this item tonight, I think that would be beneficial to the project.
Okay, thank you. I think the issue is more what was in the staff report and whether that would therefore have been properly noticed. Commissioner Schindler, did you have something?
Through the chair, I have a question to staff. Whether or not the timeframe for specifically approving this resolution changes anything in terms of the analysis of other solutions, the construction, any of the other building permitting steps that we need to, that are underway for the community center? So in other words, if there is a continuation, what impact does that have on building and delivering these amenities to the community?
I may also ask Sean to jump in here to correct me if I'm wrong, but construction generally will continue. The MPCC building is definitely underway, and it will continue to be built. As far as operations that I might leave to Sean to answer, I do agree that it would probably be best to act on the item tonight, given that, as Sean mentioned, the denial would be to, you know, deny the request for the increased noise. And then other solutions are sort of outside the purview of the planning commission and would need further direction likely from council in some cases. But Sean, if you would want to jump in on the operation question?
Thank you, Chris. Clarity on the use permit would be quite helpful from that perspective to understand whether the noise ordinance could be exceeded or not. So delaying the determination on that would delay some of the operational planning, because you would know exactly what criteria.
And through the chair, if I could clarify that, I think there was a concern about noticing. So the notice, I think that was all correct, the notice that went out. I understand the planning commission staff report may not have fully covered the last hearing, but that, those concerns are now in the record. So continuing the item, I don't know if that would make it clear for anyone or change the outcome. Just something to consider if that, I don't know if that's helpful, but just to clarify.
Thank you so much for that. I guess I'd like to push back a little bit on the, whether this is going, whether or not we approve the resolution to deny the use permit, which is why we're here today versus last time. I'm a little confused that that would, in fact, delay further. There are a lot of double negatives in that, I'm afraid. But I guess I'd like to push back that if we did not deny it tonight, would that really have an impact on construction costs? Are we otherwise, are we otherwise on time with construction costs? And also, would you not be seeking to look to other lower-decibel options whether or not we take up this motion tonight?
I could take a stab at that. Great questions. Thank you for posing them. I believe that the planning commission first heard this item in October of 2022. So at this point, we are now in March of 2023. So it's been several months. If the permit is denied, then it's very clear that the noise levels cannot be exceeded overnight. So that takes us down a certain path for operational planning and also focusing in on possible solutions with the equipment. If that remains undetermined at this point, undetermined, I should say, then we have multiple options on the table to consider for operational planning as well as whether we need to make modifications to the equipment. So again, it would be quite helpful to get an action tonight if the planning commission finds that agreeable.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Tate.
So I watched the video again a couple of times from our meeting, previous meeting. And the motion was pretty clear, I thought. And that was to, of course, deny the exceeding the 50 decimals, but to try to be below. And it was understood that it's not in the purview of the planning commission. However, council was here and acknowledged that it was something that we could put forward. So I'm confused also about, number one, how it didn't make it into the report, into the staff report, because that's pretty significant. That's completely different than just, we wanted to deny it being, you know, exceeding 50 decimals at night. And I guess I don't really see how it would throw this project off, because construction is still continuing with the community center. And the engineer just said a few minutes ago that they were still trying to evaluate cost in exploring other options. So if this came back to us, once that information was gathered, we would still be on track in my mind. So I don't really, yeah, I'm missing something here. And yeah, it's a little concerning to me that two issues did not make it into the staff report and were not addressed. You know, so that's concerning. Thank you, Chair, for giving me that.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I'd like to ensure that, you know, we are not delaying this any more than we would have been had we did what we wanted to do the first time, which was to deny it. But instead, we had to continue it so that it could come back here, so that we could have a resolution to deny it. So I'm a little bit, I'd like to find a resolution that helps staff and the construction team as well, but also is fair and equitable to all folks and that the staff report does include what was in the original motion at the February 27th meeting. So I'd love to hear from other commissioners if they'd like to speak. Otherwise, I think we need to have some sort of motion.
Chair Harris, I think the word that you're looking for is transparent. I might be wrong.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, what are your thoughts?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to observe, I think Commissioner Tate did an excellent job of expressing that the project is moving forward in construction. It already has a permit. This request was brought forward to us less than eight weeks ago. It was elected that we could move this forward by four weeks till tonight. Regrettably, staff did miss the opportunity to put in the wording that we went to some trouble to request. But I think as of tonight, we've clarified that. And I think we could move forward either to a date certain or again, four weeks ahead to actually act on this.
Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I appreciate the request or sort of the statement that there is some degree of ambiguity. I can speak only for myself, just to, in a way that I hope eliminates some clarity, some of that ambiguity. If we did not pass the resolution today, the resolution that denies the use permit, and we continue it to some date in the future, I would not be in favor of, there's pretty much nothing, nothing in the current analysis that would cause me to change my vote. So at a date in the future, be it the next meeting or four weeks hence, I would still be inclined to decline the use permit. So I think the only ambiguity is that I see that's created for staff, for the folks who are working on the community center, is the small chance that we don't approve the resolution to deny the use permit. And I don't, I wouldn't go that direction. And I have not heard anything here today that, but I will let the other commissioner, that would indicate the other commissioners would, but I certainly don't presume to speak for them at all.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. So I think, can I make sure that I understand, Commissioner Schindler, that it really, it should not, what we do tonight should not necessarily impact what staff and engineering and design are doing? Because we are here tonight to deny this use permit. So I think, as Commissioner Schindler said, it's very unlikely that that's going to change. So I don't, I guess if we're looking for transparency, but we also don't want to stymie the process, I don't think we would be. Because it seems like the staff and the design team are still going to have to be looking for solutions to get us under that 50 decibels at night. So based, is that correct?
Thank you, Chair Harris, absolutely. I was just trying to specifically address the very small sort of channel of ambiguity that was laid out here tonight and speak for how I would respond to that at a future date.
Okay, thank you. So I think we could have a motion from someone who might like to make a motion. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, I will move to continue the project to a date certain.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I wonder if we want to add to that motion in order, something along the lines of in order to correct the original motion in the staff report, into the staff report?
I'd be happy to. At this point, I've already forgotten what the third item was, but you did summarize the three of them. And I'll go with that.
Okay, all right. So before we get to a second, I want to make sure that we're very clear on what the motion is, since this is kind of perhaps what tripped us up last time. So my understanding, if I can get back to my notes here, is that there were actually maybe four things, but one of them was to request to do further noticing, which was already required since the continuation was to a date not certain. A request for additional canvassing, which it seems perhaps was done by the library commission. Urging staff, requesting staff to target looking for something less than 50 decibels versus just meeting the city requirement. And the fourth was what Commissioner Doe had outlined, which was to make, ensure that we were staying on track and would be providing the same hours and the same levels of temperature at this pool that we would be at Burgess. Okay, so I'm hopeful that someone in staff can write that better wording into a motion that is added to Commissioner Riggs' motion. Are you okay with so far what I've just outlined? Okay. Okay, so we have a first from Commissioner Riggs. But before we again go to the second, could I have somebody from staff add in what those three requirements, additional requirements for the motion were?
Yeah, so through the chair, just to clarify, it's to a date certain. Is that April 10th, which is the next meeting? So then there wouldn't be a public hearing notice? Since we've already done two.
Commissioner Tate.
I'm a little uncomfortable with that, not noticing the community that will be impacted for all the reasons that I stated previously in our last meeting. If we did not do it as a date certain, how soon could we bring this back? Well, we're thinking about a couple of weeks anyway, right?
Yeah, so if it was brought back on the April 10th, that would have to be a date certain, since there wouldn't be time for noticing. April 24th would allow time for noticing. That would be the next one available.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So even on the 10th, we would have time to notice?
No.
No, okay.
No, that notice has gone out for the 10th.
My preference is to notice. And if we take a look, there's more people at the library, I believe, than there were previously, or maybe it's the way the camera is focused right now. But more people than were there previously. And I wasn't in person so I, that night, so I'm not sure about in the audience here. But definitely noticing a second time got people out.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we want to notice, we want to do, we want to notice. So it would be on the 24th? Or is that a date certain of the 24th, or is it a date not certain? And it will be the 24th?
I think we could likely fit it on the 24th. And then, and then we'd renotice, yes.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that. And I think in the meantime, this will give the team, the design team, a little bit more time to be working on this. So maybe we'll all come to a good solution when it comes back on the 24th. Okay, Commissioner Riggs, are you okay with the motion now that keeps changing a little bit?
I am.
Okay, thank you. And I still am asking staff to read back what those other three items were to make sure that we're all in agreement.
So continue with the renoticing, which we would do through the standard notice. Was the motion to also recanvass? We have done that twice, or not to recanvass?
No, I don't think so.
All right. So then include the planning commission's desire to target a noise level lower than 50 decibels and to make sure that we can provide the similar level of service.
50 decibels and to, um, make sure that we can provide the similar level of service, um, as the Burgess Pool while not, um, restricting access to clean air and, um, quiet. Is that correct?
Commissioner Doe, are you okay with that last language? Or would you like something?
I don't want to be too picky, but can we say same level of service?
Same levels.
Or is that, I don't know, is that, just to make sure that, equivalency, thank you.
Okay, terrific. We have a first, it's, um, staff has it down, um, we've got a date. Could I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a first and a second for this motion. Let's go ahead and take a vote. So Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so we have five commissioners, um, voting in the affirmative. Okay, thank you. Thanks again for everyone who's come, um, and we may need to do it one more time. But we really appreciate it and we are interested in getting what, what needs to happen for the Valhavn Community Center. We're committed, thank you. Okay, so the next item, um, F2, this is for a use permit for 1145 Hidden Oaks Drive. So let me read the description for that one. "Consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to add to and remodel an existing non-conforming single-story, single-family residence in the R1S," that's the Single-Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. "Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines, Section 15303's Class III exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposed work would exceed 75% of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period." Do we have a, uh, do we have a report from staff or someone from, um, the team, uh, at 1145 Hidden Oaks that would like to make some comments?
Good evening, interim Chair Harris and planning commissioners and members of the public in attendance. Uh, staff has an update, uh, before we go ahead and ask the, uh, property owners to introduce themselves. So the update is to the data table that is part of the staff report as attachments. See, this would be page 103 of 118. Staff incorrectly mentioned that the maximum allowable building coverage will be 40%, whereas it should be 35.7% of the lot size, which calculates to 3579.6. So that's 3,597.6 square feet. We do have the owners, Kate and Jonathan Martin, along with applicant Gary McClure, to introduce the project and answer any questions by commissioners. With that, I conclude, uh, my updates.
Okay, thank you. Just, just to, just to confirm, um, the, the addition, the lot coverage is still, even though it's 35%, it's still, um, underneath what it, what the requirement is, right? The proposed?
So the proposed would be a tad bit less?
Okay. That's what I'm confirming. Okay, please.
Good evening, my name is Kate Martin. I'm here with my husband Jonathan. We're the property owners at 1145 Hidden Oaks Drive. Um, we have been members of the Menlo Park community since the summer of 2020, when we moved from Westchester, New York. Um, we moved from New York to 1145 Hidden Oaks with our four children, who are age 15, 13, 11, and 8, and that is largely the reason why we are seeking to remodel our home. Um, we're looking for more space. Uh, we currently need some more bedroom and bathroom space and office space when we move. We're not expecting to be working so much of the time at home. Um, we love the location of our house, both where it is in the neighborhood and where we can walk and do different things, but also we're on the end of a cul-de-sac, which is incredibly desirable for us. Um, and we love our neighbors. And so we, when we decided that we needed more space, um, we looked into other options and figured out that this was really the best for us and what we were looking for. Um, we met with a variety of architects, including Gary, um, and Jim, who are helping us, and we decided that the best way to do it was to sort of push out instead of going up. When we actually originally bought the house, we thought maybe we would sort of do a second story, but, um, for a lot of reasons, we're not doing that. We're just sort of deciding we can get the space that we need by pushing out and sort of maximizing, um, unused, uh, unused area on our lot. We've met with our neighbors, um, the, the two on either side of us and behind us in particular, along with other neighbors, um, and shared our plans and met with them, and they were all very supportive, um, and particularly happy that it's not a second floor, so it doesn't sort of interfere particularly our back neighbors with any sort of views that they have or anything like that. Um, so we're looking forward to doing it. If you have any questions, obviously Gary will speak more about the technical specifics of the project. With that, thank you, we appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any, um, clarifying question? Oh, would you?
If you have any questions. Uh, my name is Gary McClure. I work with Jim Malixey, and I'm a project manager for the project.
Okay. Did you want to make a presentation or you're just there in case there are questions?
Um, I could, I mean, um, just to, you know, we, we basically, um, kind of really wanted to work within the kind of language of Menlo Park in this area. Uh, we kind of consider this sort of a, sort of neoclassical ranch style and, you know, we, we use a lot of nice materials and detailing is our specialty. So we, we really, uh, do, uh, you know, the nice window trims and classical columns, uh, and then just with the styling. So we're really happy with the design and we think, you know, it's going to allow the owners to best use their lot, uh, along with the new landscaping.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, are there any clarifying questions of staff, um, or the applicant team from the commission at this time? Okay, if not, we will go to public comment on this item. Uh, Ms. Began, if you could open up the public comment, please.
Thank you, Chair Harris. At this moment, there are no comments or questions, either online or in person, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Okay, let's give it a minute. Okay, I think there's been plenty of time, so I'm going to close public comment and open it up for, um, commissioner questions, discussion, and ultimately a motion, please. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, thank you. I'll just note that I'm particularly, uh, pleased to see that this is a single-story exten- uh, expansion and, um, I think as such will have minimum effect on the immediate neighbors. So I, uh, you know, given that it conforms to the, uh, city development guidelines, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion if that's appropriate.
Please.
So I will move to consider and adopt the resolution to approve a use permit.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, we've got a first on the table from Commissioner Riggs and a second from Commissioner Schindler. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so that's five in favor, um, of approval, um, with one absent. So the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your presentation. Okay, I'm going to close that item and we'll be closing, um, and moving on to G, informational items, as F3 has been continued. Um, so we're just going to move to informational items. Um, we have a regular meeting on the 10th and the 24th. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any more detail you can share with us about what might be coming to either the 410 and/or the 424 meeting?
Yes, for the 410, um, we have the 1125 O'Brien Drive Draft EIR and Study Session, and that's a R and D project. So that draft, um, EIR was released on, um, last Friday. And then we have the, uh, 961 Al Camino Real project, and that's a redevelopment, um, of the Clockworks Building, um, along Al Camino. I believe those are the two ma- two items we have on that agenda. For April 24th, um, we don't have the agenda finalized. Sounds like tonight we'll have the, um, the Menlo Park, um, Community Center heat pumps on that project again, um, which will give us time to do the, to do that noticing. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, does any one of the, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer?
Um, I do. Do we know, um, how long, um, it'll take for the minutes to be caught up?
Um, we're certainly working on that. We understand that's a concern. Yeah, it's hard to estimate exactly when they'll be caught up, but we understand, um, that's important. It's important for us to catch up.
Thank you.
I know you guys tend to be short-staffed. Do you have a different process for which to catch up?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a specific process. The person who's helping us with the minutes was, um, unavailable for a while last year, but, um, she's helping us, uh, helping us get caught up now, so hopefully we, we'll be less behind, a little less behind, um, in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, Ms. Sandmeyer? Okay, with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting at 8:05 PM. Record, thank you, everyone.